Okay, we have two clocks. One there and one on our computer. And split the difference in at seven o'clock. I'm gonna call a meeting to order. And welcome all of you here this evening. We have students, quite a large group here. Welcome students. Mount Westanka, I believe, is represented. Yay, go Westanka! And then Mayor Lutheran, I believe. Yay, Mayor Lutheran! And then we also have a superintendent from Waconia School District. So yay, Waconia! So tonight is school night! So anyway, just a quick reminder, if you have electronic devices, please put them on airplane mode and/or on silence so that you don't disrupt the meeting here. And also, first order of business, I'm gonna ask that you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a vision of justice for all.
So with that, I'm going to do some introductions. I'm Lisa Whalen, I'm the mayor. And to my left, we have council members Patricia Thol, Pam Mortenson, Mike Molitor, Shannon Bruce. And on the end, we have, with WSB, our consultant engineer, Paul Hornby. We have our city clerk, Chris Lindquist. Public Works Superintendent Gary Peters. And we have Cassandra Tabor, our HR Communications Coordinator. In the audience, because we ran out of room up here. And then to my right, we have City Administrator Mike Barone, Finance Director Brian Grimm. David Abel is our Community Development Director. And next to him, we have sitting in for our normal attorney, who is Ron Beatty. We have David Anderson with Kennedy and Graven. Ron Beatty was not able to join us this evening on our end. We have Chief of Police Paul Falls. So with that, are there any changes or additions to the agenda? Anybody? Otherwise, approval of the agenda is in order. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, motion as we made by Ms. Bruce. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
And Ms. Thol seconded that. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes 5-0. So we're gonna start out the meeting with special presentations. And Mr. Barone, do you want to do the introduction?
Yes, we have Superintendent Patrick Devine from the Waconia School District. School District, Independent School District 110. And you'll probably hear that a few times yet tonight. And he's gonna talk a little bit about what's going on in their school district. And we've got a few videos to play that are embedded in this PowerPoint.
Thank you, Mike.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, thanks for having me here. As you well know, we like to come at least once a year to try to update where we're at and how you look at what's going on in our school. And many of you know that we've been really hitting it hard here for the last couple of years with projects. So today's kind of a story to tell you about how we finished up with all those projects. And for those in Mambo's Park and Mayor, I'm not recruiting. Every school is a great school. So this is just a chance to tell you our story. So we have a little PowerPoint we'll go through. And I don't know if I'm controlling or you're controlling. And you might need to help me with the video on the bottom left. Here's a little... We had a little branding exercise. And I think you helped us with that a little bit. And as we take a look at the brand, we started with a video that are each one of our cities. And as you well know, we have five cities we're part of. The five strands across the W represent the five communities. So if you could play that one.
If you had one word to describe ISD 110, Waconia Public Schools, what would it be?
Excellent!
Friendly!
Challenging!
Commitment!
Success!
Welcoming!
Caring!
Prepare!
Determined!
Confidence!
Passion!
Inclusive!
Community!
Explore!
Create!
Operate!
When you put all the words together, it's our brand.
When it came out, "Explore your passions, create your success," I thought, yeah, that's us. That's it. That's Waconia School District.
It's been a fantastic experience going through this discovery process of determining who we are at ISD 110. Through the input of many, we have truly found our brand.
I think it really encapsulates who we are because it's about the passion of learning. It's about the passion of teaching. It's about the passion of, you know, taking what we learn here and taking it to the next step.
The part that gets to me the most is that it's not our job as a teacher or as a community to give success to our kids, but allow for opportunities for our kids to create their own success and to define their own success, too.
After looking at all the feedback, it's as if the tagline wrote itself. Let's start with, "Explore your passions." It's what we do. It's who we are. We work with kids to help fuel their passions in learning. We complete our tagline with, "Create your success." It's personalized. It's their own. One that begins the moment a student walks through the doors.
There's so many different things people can do. You have people in sports. You have kids in show choir. You have kids that are in computer activities. And everybody has this ability to create their own passion, whatever it is.
We still have the small-town feel. We have the large-town opportunities. Yet we actually still care about each other. And that kind of brings us all closer together as a school family and as a school community, too.
The logo itself has a story. The circle represents being as one. The community, the students, the parents, the teachers, the staff members, all are as one. And it looks pretty good on a lapel pin.
I definitely feel supported by teachers as well. They help a lot with, you know, if you're struggling, making sure you're staying on top of stuff. And they really are looking to teach you lessons, not only about education and about your course, but better things that are gonna help you in life.
And now we have the five lines, and our logo's complete. Each of those lines represent our five communities.
Minatrista!
New Germany!
St. Bonny! Victoria! Waconia!
We're very proud that the brand describes who we are. We are.
We are! We are! We are! We are! We are! We are 110! We are 110! We are 110!
That's been a really fun experience this last year. We did a lot of community outreach to find out what people thought, what we represented. And we're really proud that that's what came through. That people see us as having students that can, you know, explore and find their passions. So I'm really proud of that. And thank you for those that partook the video. It turned out nice. But as you know, this last two years has been the work of the $75 million referendum. Lots of work had went into that. And we just kind of wanna share how that ended out. This summer, we had the big switch in the middle school and high school. A lot of moving. Our soccer team moved most of the furniture for us at the fundraiser. So that was fun. And then our staff had to pack everything up and get it going. We put a new roadway. If you've been down by our school, our high school, Highway 5 hasn't been roundabout. And it's gonna go north until it hits the other side of 10. Right now, 10 is halfway there from there. You drive, and they'll finish up the other half next summer. Middle school had some construction to get our middle school students in there, which was our former high school. And we're doing early childhood remodeling also. And if you look at the community app I gave you, there's a lot of the bullets on each one of these can tell you all the upgrades that were done to each of all of these. But the marquee area is our high school. It was a middle school. And we doubled the size, put a huge commons area into it, and a brand-new entryway. And probably the marquee place is our 1,000-seat-out-of-town. And we have a... We have, from two years ago, we opened, or a year and a half ago, we opened the Lake Town Elementary. That has some really cool design. It's got a lot of natural lighting into it. If you walk through the building, you'll probably only see about a third of the lights on during the day just because they don't need them, because all the natural lights are coming in through the window. Lot of flex group learning spaces for our kids, 21st century learning models. So we're really, really excited about how those designs... We upgraded our other two elementaries and put the same hairline design in common learning spaces in there. So we feel good about that. And then we did that the same with the middle school. And the high school had a big, as you know, remodel. One of those places that we didn't talk about, that haven't talked about, is the early learning center, which is a far right there. That one turned into double in size also, because we moved our alternative learning center and moved our early learning kids to have more space. So we did a lot of remodeling in there. And then our athletic complex. Our athletic complex, we've added a nine-lane track, a turf field, eight-practice soccer lacrosse football fields, two varsity-level baseball fields. And we feel like we're gonna probably get a tennis courts in next fall. So things have really progressed and moved through well. The pictures, I won't really show as much of the videos, so we got a couple of videos I wanna show you. So just bear with me if you want.
Hi, I'm Pat Devine, Superintendent, Waconia Public Schools, ISD 110. Here it is, end of the summer, and we are ready to go. We will open the door September 11th. It's been a project that's taken a lot of work, but its end result is fantastic. You're gonna love it. It's gonna be great for our community. It's gonna be great for our kids. And it's gonna be great for learning. We're one of 110's high schools in the state that have a 1,000-seat-out-of-town. This high school campus is one that's gonna serve kids for generations. And it's all due because of what our voters did to approve this referendum. We are so thankful for our community and the support they give to our school system. We are thankful for the construction crew and the staff to make this transition happen.
Our high school turned out really nice, and it's functioning really well. We shot that video before the school started when it was still fresh and looking. Now the students are in it, enjoying it, and it's functioning really well. The kids love it. Our families love it. And it's really been a great addition to our community and our school. And then we have a middle school, which is our old high school. We've done some work in there.
Hi, I'm Pat Devine, Superintendent, Waconia Public Schools, ISD 110. We're here to talk about the middle school. First off, welcome back, students and parents. Come take a look at the new facility we have for our middle-school age group. It is so exciting what we have here in the middle school. It's a building different than most middle schools in the state. Why? Because they're moving into a high school. In a high school, you get different amenities, such as a three-quart varsity-style gym that seats 2,000 people. An auditorium. We have an auditorium for 400 people to watch different activities in our auditorium. We have science labs that are designed for high schools. We have common areas for academic areas that surround the three groups of age groups. One of the first things you'll notice when you drive up to our new middle school is that there'll be a drop-off lane that allows us to keep 30 cars off the community drive. We'll stack up in twos all the way in a loop that you'll see as soon as you come in. If you come in any later than 7:30, you'll be forced to drive in that loop so we can keep our students safe. We have plenty of new spaces in this building. Some that are really exciting that you may not have thought of. The weight room is a new facility for our middle-school age. We have a wrestling room. And we have an aerobics room. So those are new spaces for our middle-school age group that you normally don't see at a middle-school level. So one of the questions has been, what's happened to the edible classroom? Well, we have moved that to the current middle-school space. It is right out the backside between Highway 5 and our middle-school building. And it's a fabulous footprint. Our designers for the garden had a chance to redesign it exactly the way they wanted to. And they're very pleased with the outcome. So this has been quite a summer. It's been a big transition summer to get things moved. And we are ready at the middle school to make it happen. So come on back. Welcome. And let's enjoy it.
So it's been quite a journey to get to where we're at. For those, I know you've had construction projects you've approved here and had to watch over and so on. So that sometimes takes a lot of work and a lot of eyes and hands and make sure things are done the way you want them. But in the end, we really feel good about where we're at with our school. We are doing a couple of other things that we added for our families with a new website. The new website allows them for easier access to find things. The two things up in the square there, one is a single sign-on. So we used to have like five different password areas you'd go into, whether to pay for the lunch or go see your student's academic account or whatever. Now we have what's called a single sign-on. You only sign on once, and you get to all your data that you want that's personalized to your family. And then we have a calendar function that syncs with any mobile device. So if you're... You used to have a calendar that syncs with your device. Now you can pick which activities you want, which tools you want to sync, and they'll sync with your phone so you can always know what's going on with your students and your children. So those have been really nice functions. And we really amped up our social media presence. We've actually worked with a company out of Whitberry that they call themselves the Social Media Moms. And there's about 30 women that stay at home that just keep track of all your social media. And we've... We have about 400 times the hits that we were having before they came aboard. So it's just been so impressive to see what they've done. And so we now try to get our stories out there more in terms of videos. We have a few more videos that we've introduced. And that's kind of where we're at and what we've been doing. As I said, some of the big highlights, if you wanna see what the facts were on these or the bullets are the best part of these, we have exactly what happened with all the buildings and all the space. Some of the academic learning areas that we're really working on right now is getting really authentic learning opportunities for our kids. We're working with businesses, with the medical field, and with manufacturing to get students out in the field, actually learning from the people that are in the field. So it's not just a theoretical learning. It's real hands-on, and we get our students out in the field that way. Our middle school started a program called Web, which is where everybody belongs. And we're really working with mainly our sixth graders to feel well in this community school and our eighth graders to hear it, but then give them that feeling. And our elementaries, now that we have three, are working a lot on making sure that it's common across all three elementaries. And there's a new program, we just got a reading program called Lucy Cockens, which is really a clean program for reading, but that's gonna change things there. And then I would say for... One of the things we did in early childhood we feel really good about is we acquired the Catholic Church in St. Bonny. Their schools were leasing part of that building. And we have early childhood programming going on in St. Bonny. And I remember talking to one of the custodians there and talking about, when I first came here, it really felt that Waconia treated St. Bonny and Minatrista like, oh, you're just up north and you're really not a part of our school. And that really bothered me a lot. And I said, well, we need to get a footprint up here. And we need to have some property that we're having kids go to. So we have a bus that will take kids directly to the Lake Town School. The kids from St. Bonny and Minatrista are in the new elementary. So they give out those, their children off in the morning at St. Bonny, the Catholic Church, and they can pick them up at the end of their workday because our bus will take them straight to school and back. And there's going to be before and after-school care. And we also have early childhood programming going on during the day. So it's been good. And you may have caught, you know, what we are, the 110? The 110 is all of us being one, all white communities. We believe that, and we want that. That's what I have.
Great.
Questions? Thoughts?
No, no questions. Thank you, though, for coming and sharing with us. Love your color coordination. Nice, so...
And lastly, I would say I would leave some of these behind, but if anybody likes magicians, our brand opening for our theater, our 1,000-seat theater, we're bringing a nationally-known magician who calls himself a shock delusionist. Has a little bit of a Gothic look, but they say he's incredible. He's had his own show in Vegas, and he travels and does shows in New York and Chicago and Australia and Germany, and he sells out wherever he goes. So that's our first show.
And that's when?
That's November 18th.
November 18th.
You get tickets online from our website.
All right. Great. Thank you, Mr....
Some of these students won't be shocked. You can come on over. Thank you so much. Thanks for having me.
Thank you.
Good to be here.
All right. So always nice to get updates from our schools that are in our city or that our students go to. So with that, next on our agenda is a financial update with Mr. Brian Grimm. I bet it's not quite as exciting, though, is it?
No, I was gonna say, I don't have any cool videos or a bunch of people starring. But my production budget was probably less, right? So we'll just, yeah, go on to, this is on page three of the packet here. It's just the regular third-quarter financial update. Page four of your packet has the revenue items. We're at about 59% of collections year-to-date, which when I look back last year, we were about at 60%. We'll have our December tax settlement coming in, or second-half tax settlement coming in in December. As far as the expenditures, that's the next, I think, five pages. Start on page five. If you go to the totals page, I think on page nine, we're at about 72% spent of budget, which when I look back at last year, we were right about at that same point also. So I think everything's tracking well. And then the cash and investment reports is on page 10, which is the main thing you'll see there is we have our couple of new funds set up with our 2017 Street Capital Projects Fund 499, which is the capital fund, and the 532, which is the debt fund for the principal and interest payments. And I don't know, I guess I'll probably just stand for any questions. Everything is tracking, you know, well for third quarter and just the regular quarterly updates, so...
Thank you. Any questions or comments by council? This is more kind of informational. Otherwise, we'll move on to our next agenda. So thank you, Mr. Grimm. And we'll be getting probably another update at the end of December or January?
Well, yeah, probably have a preliminary fourth-quarter update. And then we'll have our year-end audit presentation usually in the May timeframe.
Okay.
Correct, yep.
All right. So next up... So we have the Metropolitan Council Environmental Services with us. And you're gonna have to make your own introductions because I don't have all your names down here. So thank you for coming. We've had some issues with the sewer, as you know, out on Enchanted Lane. Just before you get started, just so I know there may be one or two of you here this evening that may wanna make some comments. Generally, we don't under special presentations. However, this evening, I am going to allow the public to make some comments, ask questions if they so wish. So maybe you can start with your presentation if staff needs to weigh in or has some extra comments. And then we're gonna have the public make some comments if they wish. So with that...
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Janine Clancy. I'm the Assistant General Manager at the Metropolitan Council Environmental Services. I am one of the Assistant General Managers that is responsible for regional wastewater system planning, the capital improvement program, and a number of other community programs that support our customers with regard to the regional wastewater system. So I'd like to also introduce Chris Remus, who is the Principal Engineer for this project, as well as Tim O'Donnell, who is our Project Citizen Liaison. And then Tom Buchall. Tom is a construction... Excuse me, a council-authorized representative who represents MCES on the project full-time to ensure that the standards that are met during the project. So thank you for making the time on your agenda this evening to discuss the MCES facility that we oftentimes refer to as the L-51 Force Main, which is a six-inch deputal iron pipe that was built in 1971 and is located in Tuxedo Road. And before we get into the details of the project, I would just like to take just a few minutes to talk a little bit about MCES and our work in the region. So again, MCES is one of two operating divisions of the Metropolitan Council. We are responsible for planning, maintaining, and operating the regional wastewater system that serves the Southern County metropolitan area. The city of Minatrista is one of 109 communities that we serve. Our regional wastewater system serves 2.6 million people. It consists of 610 miles of sewer pipes. And we refer to those as the Interceptor System because they intercept wastewater from local community systems and convey it to one of our eight treatment plants. Again, we own 60 pump stations and eight treatment plants located throughout the region. We treat 250 million gallons of wastewater every single day. And we exist to protect public health, the environment, and to promote the economic vitality of the region. So generally speaking, MCES... Excuse me. Generally speaking, wastewater is collected by communities, is conveyed to the MCES wastewater system, excuse me, to the Interceptor System, and then travels to one of our eight wastewater treatment plants. And the city of Minatrista is served by the treatment plant located in Shakopee. We refer to that as our Blue Lake Plant. It's our third-largest treatment plant in the system. Here is a map of our MCES facilities in Minatrista. This system is identified by red and green lines. These... The system serves not only Minatrista, but serves the communities of Shorewood, Mound, Spring Park, and St. Bonaventures. So zooming in a little bit closer is our system located in Tuxedo Road. And you will see the L-51 lift station at Tuxedo Road near Lee, which pumps wastewater to the MCES gravity system to the North and West. So the green on this map indicates Force Main, which means that the wastewater is pumped under pressure versus the red where the wastewater flows by gravity. And by and large, our system is made up predominantly by a gravity system. So I wanted to talk just a little bit about our revenue sources because, again, that kind of sets the context for how we pay for improvements to our system. The majority of our revenue comes from our customer communities, such as Minatrista, through the municipal wastewater charge and through SAC, the Sewer Accessibility Charge, and from our 800, over 800 industrial customers, which pay a high strength cost for us treating their wastewater. Our capital program is about $140 million every year. And it represents our investments into the wastewater system. That may seem like a lot, but our system's value has an asset value of $7 billion. So $140 million is about right in terms of investments on an annual basis. So in the past 10 years, MCES has ramped up its efforts to rehabilitate our wastewater... Excuse me, our Interceptor System. Our projects have been prioritized based on condition assessment of the Interceptor System. So like you, we televise our gravity pipes to assess the conditions. We also work with communities to prioritize work that we need to do in our system. In the Lake Minatanka area, since 2008, we have invested $18 million on an annual basis in the wastewater system in this area. But like all government agencies, we are forced to prioritize our work because of the need for capital dollars simply outweighs the availability of projects that needs to be done. With all that said, we recognize that we fell short in our efforts to work with your community on this project. Because of this, because this section of pipe heading north on Tuxedo Road from L-51 is a Force Main, we are unable to inspect the system without taking it out of service. Our records indicate a limited concern about the integrity of the pipe until 2015. And while our staff checked in... Excuse me. While your staff checked in with us prior to your community's street reconstruction projects, our historical data didn't suggest that we needed to reprioritize this project over other projects. However, as the council knows and your staff knows, the L-51 Force Main has experienced two breaks in the past six weeks. And upon excavating and inspecting the pipe to make the repairs, we observed corrosion on the exterior of the pipe. We have made the repairs with clamps, which is really a temporary repair in both cases. But we're no longer confident in the integrity of that pipe.
Good, neither are we.
We certainly recognize and regret the inconvenience that this has caused your community and your staff. Replacing the pipe now, however, is necessary to ensure the public health, to protect the environment, and to limit further disturbances to the community's transportation investments in the area. So over the past week, our staff, predominantly Chris Remus and others, have been working with your staff, Mr. Hornby included, to develop a plan that we believe can be completed predominantly this fall with the chance of perhaps a wear course having to be completed next spring. But we plan on working very hard to make sure that the street is reconstructed this fall. The MCES Force Main project before the council tonight will be paid for by the Metropolitan Council with no special assessments to the city or its residents. I also like to mention that we recognize that there is a potential that your contractor may incur some additional costs for re-mobilization. And if that's the case, your city staff can make sure that the city... make sure that the city of Minatrista is made whole on those expenditures. So with that, I'd like to ask Chris Remus to walk us through the project approach, as well as our communication strategy, and then if you have questions for me that aren't answered by Chris, uh, Chris and I will respond to those. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Janine. Good evening, I'm Mayor, council members. Hi, this is Janine, so my name is Chris Remus. I'm a Principal Engineer with the Met Council. And tonight, I just want to walk through the background, project approach, the schedule, and the communications process that the Met Council most involved. So, starting with the background, as Janine referenced, uh, there's been several recent breaks, specifically, uh, two here now in the last six weeks. What this map is showing is, uh, the location of those breaks, and as noted, the failures were due to external corrosion, uh, which caused holes in the pipe, as we're showing kind of on the inset, uh, it broke that way and leaked wastewater out. So the increased frequency is why the Met Council is moving forward with replacing this Force Main before further breaks occur, result in wastewater spills and disruption to the residents of the island.
Does your Force Main go under the bridge or under the water?
It goes under the water.
Okay.
Through the bridge portion.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. So here's just another brief summary of the dates, um, referencing those three, three events, I'm sorry. First event being in July of two thousand fifteen, the most recent two events in August of two thousand seventeen, and recently here, October of two thousand seventeen. And just as, uh, just as noted, the Met Council typically will test the water quality at spill sites and post signs, um, to avoid contact and go out until further notice. The water quality is typically tested a few days later, deemed suitable, uh, signs are removed, and, uh, people can enjoy their water activities, and in this case, those signs were put up, um, October sixth, Met Council Water Quality Division being tested three days later, and the signs were removed from the area October eleventh. So, project approach, um, as you know, it's kind of a difficult location, Tuxedo Road being very narrow, sharp ends, and it's adjacent to Lake Minnetonka on one or both sides, uh, primarily through most of the corridor where the Met Council Force Main is located. The council looked at several options of how to construct this new pipe. Ultimately, after conversations with our construction group, engineering staff, and discussions with the city staff and direction, we decided to install the pipe via directional drilling. There would also be a small element of open-cut construction between the bridge and the city lift station, just due to a short length of pole and the ninety-degree curve there, and the connections to be made at the lift station itself. So what the, the goals that we wanted to achieve with directional drilling is that one, the city, you know, receives a drivable surface with the expectation that the original contract was out. The council also is looking to replace the pipe in that same schedule and timely manner to minimize impacts to the existing landscape, and to minimize traffic impacts and be able to maintain tra, maintain traffic for the residents that do live on the island. It may be by flaggers at, at times during construction, but access is, uh, will be there for residents that live on the island.
Will there be access for emergency vehicles? And have you talked with our Public Safety Director regarding that?
Do you believe that information was communicated with the original mayor? Yes. That the city staff and, uh, emergency members for surrounding communities, um, Minatrista, et cetera, were notified of the upcoming work, and, uh, that is something that our construction people are gonna have to be aware of, that that is maintained, if there is emergencies, that there's communications that those vehicles can get through. So this is kind of an overview of the project layout. Uh, the green is signifying the areas that are gonna be directionally drilled. The red portions are, will be the directional drilling tunnel pits. The red box, uh, the, uh, kind of bottom locations where the L-51 lift stations were referenced, and, um, the blue portion is the open-cut area that reference to just, again, the connection on the bridge, the tippy corner, and the connections that need to be made, uh, be more efficient to install that pipe as an open-cut operation. So, construction schedule, we've, uh, spending consultation with the city engineering staff and reviewing the schedule of the current city project. We agreed upon the following plan of action. The current construction schedule is to get the, the base course for the city project completed, uh, with the exception of the open-cut areas that we showed on the map there and where the drilling pits are located. And in the meantime, the Met Council, while the road contractors working on getting the base course paved, uh, the Met Council would, uh, fuse together the temporary conveyance pipe and install that. That would be off to the side of the road. Those two actions could happen concurrently.
Okay, say that again, so you're saying that we can be paving while you do your open cut?
Sorry, let me clarify that for you, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
While the city is paving, we can install our temporary conveyance pipe. Now, what that is, is we will be open cutting and connecting to a live Force Main, uh, so we can't do that work while pumping, so we have to divert our existing lift station through a temporary pipe and route that to the end of where discharge is today, so we can work on the existing pipe without a spill of sewage.
Right. But what I'm saying is, and we can talk about this maybe after your presentation, but I want to make sure that we can continue our project on either end of your project, but my question is, if you have an open cut, will we be able to get our equipment across the island to do paving before winter sets in?
Our plan is to have the width at least to have passable traffic for one lane, so that includes the construction traffic, so that there's areas south of L-51 unenchanted lane, that that work can be going on. East of us, east of the bridge to L-51, where directional drilling, they could be past us and work in those areas as well.
Well, the, and the goal here is that, um, we'll get the, we'll do the paving before they start doing their open cutting, so that that doesn't, so in, in weeks, uh, two and four, they show the open cut installation of the system.
Okay, so they're, okay.
And directional drilling in November. So our plan is to, you know, is all-weather dependent, obviously, is to have a, a base course on, with the exception of the open-cut areas, uh, in October.
Okay. Okay. I just want to make clear, because that's what I'm understanding, that we can still pave, um, on either end, so, okay. Go ahead.
Yes. And then, um, in November, we would begin our directional drilling process in weeks one through three. As Paul just referenced, uh, in approximately the second week, we would look to open cut our pipe from the bridge to the lift station. And then, to finish up the four weeks, to patch up these areas that are open, from, now we skip these areas of open cut, and we get those paved along with where our directional drilling pits are.
You're saying you're planning on paving those areas in December?
November, prior to Thanksgiving.
November?
Yeah.
Okay. Assuming weather holds out? I mean...
Correct.
Okay?
Yeah.
Okay?
Our goal is to have it paved this season.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Any, okay, keep going. Any other questions?
I should add, maybe for the council, that, um, in a typical construction year, you can get pavement down up until around Thanksgiving, and about that point is when plants typically shut down, plus or minus, depending on the weather. That's the one thing that can't be controlled, so, um, in part with, um, the next step to get the workhorse on, um, again, weather-dependent, if we have weather like we're gonna have this week, end of November, you know, I see that the construction is gonna go relatively quickly. If we, you know, get a early freeze-up, you know, we're gonna have to come up with a Plan B.
That's what I was gonna ask, would it remain gravel for the winter, or what type of...
Well, Gary does not want it to be gravel, and I don't think we want it to be gravel either, because if we are paving either end, we don't want to be, uh, plowing and then hitting gravel and plowing gravel onto our brand-new paved road.
Correct. The goal is to have the base course down by the end of October.
For both, for all the sections?
Yeah, with the exception of the open-cut areas that, um, the council will, um, provide those areas for us on our plans, so we can have our contractor leave those out, we'll just ramp those areas so people can get in and out, and then they'll do the open-cut work and restore it, and then, um, one thing, one or, one or two things are gonna happen, either they're gonna patch it, or we're gonna patch it, it depends on coordination with the two contractors.
Okay, when you say "patch," I don't like that word, since this is a brand-new road.
They'll have to put the base course down over that area.
Okay.
And let's say we go through the winter and it's, um, maybe the weather goes south on us, and we pave it late, and it starts to crack up, well, then it's gonna be taken out and redone.
Okay.
But that's, again, that's one of those situations where the council had indicated there's additional cost to the city, they're gonna take care of that.
Okay.
So it's gonna, this will be late in the season, um, we've tried our best to work with the Met Council, and the council's worked with us to try to come up with a solution that suits both projects, and that's why they're looking at doing their major work in, after November, uh, first, so that we can get our base course.
We can get our, our stuff done? I understand that, and I appreciate that. Don't get me wrong, it's just frustrating, and especially when you get calls from residents that are very unhappy, so, all right. So, the blue part, so correct me if I'm wrong, the blue part is the only part that would not be paved by the end of October? That's the plan?
That portion, plus the two red box areas, that we wouldn't put any new pavement in there until their excavation work is done.
So then a question, but then it's a patching.
We would put in the base course where there wouldn't be, uh, a seam in the base course.
In the, okay, so then the wear course would go on top in the spring, and it would cover it up?
Right. I think from, I think from Met Council standpoint and, and ours, it'd probably be better to put the wear on next year, in case we do, in the excavation areas, get some settlement, that things can be corrected before the wear goes on. The goal here was not to put a seam in the wear course.
Yeah, the, it's not uncommon to do the base course and then do the wear course six months later, that's not unusual, so, um, okay. And the best-laid plans are mice and men, okay.
I'll move back to the schedule.
Yeah.
Actually, I think we've kind of covered the schedule as far as, uh, wear course, you know, weather-dependent, uh, maybe being installed and restored, as Paul discussed.
So another question.
Sure.
Of course, we checked and asked about the sewer line, it's old, is, is there any plans? And we're told no, and I understand your, from your presentation, you've got a lot of lines. So another question, since we've had issues out here in this area, why wouldn't you go in and check the line that's also on Enchanted? Because that too is quite old, I'm assuming it's a similar construction as this section? And I think there's been breaks out there, have there not?
Off the top of my head, I couldn't speak to the breaks. Number or frequency, uh, that is a gravity line, as opposed to a Force Main, a pressure pipe, upstream of L-51 on Enchanted Lane.
Okay, so what difference does that make?
So, one, the Force Main operates under pressure. Gravity is open air, just posed by gravity to the lift station. Uh, we do have an inspection program, as Janine referenced too, and that, uh, line was inspected via CCTV, similar to how the city inspects their lines in two thousand nine. On a conditional assessment scale, that rates as an average condition pipe on our scale. So what that does is that we'll put that on a, a program to be revisited, re-examined, on approximately a ten-year scale, so in the upcoming years, next few years here, we'll look to CCTV that again and assess the condition of that pipe.
Would that be, would that be then, um, a lined, uh, project? Would it be a directional bore project? Because, um, it is old, I guess it was put in the, what, early seventies?
I believe it is the same vintage, I can't...
Right, and so...
Stay the approximately here.
I mean, obviously, if you had to dig it up and redo it, one, we would not be happy because it would disrupt our neighborhood again, and two, we, you know, it just seems like a waste, so, doesn't it seem to make sense to view it now?
Again, it's, that's how our program is set up, to assess the bank level of condition pipe, uh, on roughly that timeframe. To answer your question, as far as digging it up versus other methods, if it were a condition that it was degraded pipe, I think that would be something we looked to line, uh, to replace pipe lining, which would have minimal impact to the road, uh, that size, where we can most likely just remove the cask and lid and invert a liner right through without digging up the road.
Right.
Minimal traffic impact, uh, similar to something the city probably does within its sanitary sewers as well.
Okay. All right.
To the mayor's point, I would concur in that it would seem, although there's, you know, you have a plan for a reason, but there's also reasons to deviate from the plan, and if ten years is the, uh, timeframe on that, based on that a, a very closely related pipe has already failed three times, it would seem to be logical to, uh, not stick exactly to the plan and check into it to, uh, to avoid this from potentially happening again, and the inconvenience that it causes you and the, the city of Minatrista and its residents.
Mayor, members of the council, um, we have a pipe, a pipe, um, inspection program that will be starting here very shortly. We do most of that work under contract, and we can certainly have that pipe inspected in advance of what we originally anticipated.
Thank you.
Mayor and council members, one thing to point out too is that the Force Main that they're at, the issues are with now is a cast-iron, uh, pipe.
Right.
And so it is subject to external corrosion issues. The, um, gravity sewer is PVC.
PVC.
Which has, which is much more resistant to corrosion, so the chances of that, and that's a gravity pipe, so the chances of it having a similar corrosion issue is pretty much nonexistent from that standpoint.
Well, maybe the Met Council would feel better knowing that, and we would feel better knowing this too, so...
Well, here's one of the reasons why, for instance, Water Main.
Right.
City of Minatrista is standard to use plastic pipe, PVC pipe.
Yeah.
Just for that reason, so you don't have that long-term issue with corroding pipe.
Okay.
If you're giving a question, we'll come later.
Thank you very much, thank you. Okay, and I understand this, this is a difficult project considering that we're, it's late in the season, we're doing our project and all of that, it's kind of last minute, but, yeah, so...
I just wanted to walk through to the project team, uh, as far as who's gonna be doing the work. Mingar Construction Companies is the, the general contractor doing the work for us. Uh, we've had a long history with, uh, Mingar Construction from the Met Council's perspective on completing many jobs with us. Ellenson Companies is, uh, the company that's gonna be working with us doing the directional drilling. We've also worked with them on some large diameter directional drilling, yeah, on the Tyro Road One project in L.A., uh, and, uh, they do a solid reputation in the industry, so looking forward to working with them on this project as well. Valley Paving is the city, uh, city's contractor for the roadway project, that will also be working with and coordinate schedules and working to get the road in place.
Okay.
Project Communications, uh, we're working on efforts to provide coordination between the city and the Met Council projects and how that info is shared with communities, along with emergency services and other services that are affected by our project in this area. Some of the notifications that we'll be looking to, uh, share with the community and the cities, there are changes in traffic patterns.
You don't have a lot of options, it is an island.
No, it's, it's an example, I, I do apologize, yes. Uh, project progress updates, excavation locations, uh, so with this, uh, Met Council is working with our consultants, Xan and Associates, and WSB, to provide communication services to the communities involved, along with, uh, Met Council Construction Group, who provides some, what I guess I'll call it, underground communications, knocking on doors, handing out flyers and such. handing out flyers and such, communicating with residents and day-to-day impacts. Met Council will also be working to address the city and Met Council projects through their communications as they're intertwined.
Right.
We're working together on this to share updates as a whole, where we are in both processes. So as updates come about, there'll be several means to communicate those updates. One is through electronic communications. An example I have up here is both of the Met Council website, which we do have established at this point. There's a picture of Minatrista website. We also had some brief conversations with Cassandra on how to get people signed up for that, so they receive notifications whether it be a text or email. Same with the Met Council, that people can log on to that site, choose whether to receive emails or texts, that people can see communications on the project. The U.S. council members are also welcome to do the same, if you so choose.
And your names will be on there for the contact, for people to complain?
We're getting to other contact resources. Some additional methods, as I mentioned, some of the tools our construction folks use. We work with our consultants on this to prepare flyers. The letter that we recently sent out, I've worked in conjunction with our consultants for communications. Door hangers, project update cards, those would be things that if there's updates or specific needs of communication, we will hand those out ahead of time that the residents are aware of what's going on and who to contact.
Okay.
Does the city approve or give a look at those prior to you sending them out or handing them out?
Uh, we did. And so the first one that they sent out, I had, Mr. O'Donnell sent it to me. And so I gave my input from a city perspective and made a couple of changes, and they incorporated those into those, to the materials that have gone out. It's, I don't know if I can take a couple of minutes here to talk about a couple of things. But, you know, this has kind of been a, I mean, if there could be any kind of worse timing for these two things to happen, any conjunction with each other, it happens. So, kind of Murphy's Law on that one. But, we're trying to make the most and best that we can out of this entire project. We had a lot of conversations, I know I talked with Janine, maybe 20, 30 minutes last week, middle of the week. And Paul's been talking with Chris. We've been trying to come up with a correct solution that allows them to do their project and still get it done before the snow flies, and the same for us. And then still with no additional cost to the city. And with, with that caveat that if something does need to be fixed later, they'll fix it at their cost. So, they've been very good. In fact, you know, I, I don't know if I would say the word "challenge," but I talked with Janine about, I said, "You guys got to own this problem." And I think they have. They've got four people here tonight.
Thank you.
They're trying to make every effort they can to work with our engineering staff. Initially, this was going to be an open cut the entire way, and they were able to work with our engineer, Paul Hornby, to come up with, so there's small sections of open cut so we could actually do our, our, our road project. So there was some communication that went on. They checked with us on the flyer, which I did add a few things to. They have their stuff up and running on their communications, whether it's web page, telephone. And I would ask any residents that's here, if you call them, because it's kind of their project with the, with the force main issue. If you call and don't get a satisfactory answer, please feel free to call the city and we'll try to go to bat for you. But I suspect that they're going to try to answer your questions the best they can and at least give you some factual information from which you need to work in order to make the impact as minimal as possible, if that's possible with this. But we're going to try, so... I just want to correct one thing. The email that I sent out to council to kind of go through the history and the timeline, and Chris has it on his PowerPoint, correct? I noted that the first force main break was in July 2016, is it? In fact, they have it correct as 2015. So they had the one break in 2015, middle of the summer. And then, as they've mentioned, they've had two in the last six weeks. So, our road project just happened to be moving along just ahead of those breaks, so... And, you know, it went from not being on their radar to "Maybe we'll do it next year because it looks pretty bad," to "Now we're doing it next week." So, you know, they, they've realized the severity of their issue there, and I think they're trying to address that without screwing up our project.
And we, we understand that. We understand it's a pickle, so, and we appreciate that.
Yeah.
We're still going to put the pressure on you.
And they know that, yes.
Okay. All right.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, to your question. Additional project contacts, as we referenced, and as Mr. Broney referenced, if there are any residents in the audience that these are points of contact.
Okay.
The Met Council website address is up there, and you can, as I mentioned, sign up for communication information, project information. There is also email and phone line, those are both kind of serve as hotlines. And those are staffed 24/7 by our communications consultants.
Okay.
Either they will respond to you as soon as they can or directly question, concern to ourselves and between myself, construction, and others in staff, we will work to do so as soon as possible.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
With that, we can stand for your questions.
Are there any questions? Otherwise, I'm going to open it up. Is there anybody here that wishes to make a comment or have additional questions? Mr. Huglitt? You're going to have to state your name and address for the record.
Yes. Bruce Huglitt, 3770 Enchanted Lane. Honorable mayor, honorable members of council, thank you for, for being here. You're elected officials, and it's like, you're not getting paid big money, so... I'm a citizen who really appreciates the work that you put in to keep, keeping our city going. So, this is disappointing, to say the least. And we know that you did your work upfront, and you rely on technical people to really advise you. And you have to base your decisions on the advice you get from your technical team. So for me, I think the responsibility lies in our engineering group, who suggested or kept going forward with this project that started in October 2. It's like, there was no room for error. And knowing that asphalt needs 50 degrees in the ground, and it needs ambient temperature 50 degrees and rising to even apply, November, we had an average temperature of 41 degrees. So this was really a tight window, and I'm disappointed we went through with the project starting in October. The second disappointment is, of course, Met Council's engineering group missing this. So, in my opinion, I don't hold any of you responsible. The responsibility is in the engineering advice you're getting, so...
Well, I will...
I'm concerned, I should be, we've got tons of dust out there.
I will say this, Mr. Huglitt.
You know, seeing the open cut part, that gave me a little relief. I think there's maybe one hole in there between the bridge and the bolt link.
Yep.
But still, it's like, we're in a time crunch here to get it tarred, right? This base layer, so if you get that done, Paul, hats off, so it's...
We're going to try. Just, and I understand your frustration, seriously. I think we all are, including the Met Council, because none of this was expected. However, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say, you know, none of us have a crystal ball. Now, if you do, you could be a multimillionaire. But, so none of us have a crystal ball, and we're given information, and obviously, the weather is going to play a big part in it. Nobody knows what that's going to do. The Met Council didn't know where to foresee another two breaks. So, you know, if we all had crystal balls and we could foresee the future, the council would have said, "No, let's hold off on this." But the council was given all of the facts, and we had choices. Wait till next year, you know, that was a choice. Take the chance of possibly the bids coming in higher. Take the chance of, you know, then seasonal flooding, yet once again. I mean, there's all these thing factors that you have to factor in. Or go with it now, know what your bid, what your cost is going to be. And, I mean, you know, so there's, there's choices. And we, the council made choices, and the staff made choices, and Met Council made choices. Here we are today, and we're going to work with it and do the very best we can.
Thank you, and I understand, and I understand. And I understand you make the choices based on, I mean, it's like chocolate or vanilla.
Yeah.
This is all the data in front of us, and we make our decisions based on the data we have.
Right.
I mean, I've been an engineer for 35 years, so I understand that.
Yeah.
We solve our problems based on the data we have, so... And I can continue to trust that you're going to make good decisions for us, for us residents.
Going to try.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. You gave me a platform to come up and speak tonight and not have to, you know, send an email ahead of time. Appreciate that. And I, I do feel a bit better seeing the diagrams and where the open cut areas, and understanding what they're doing. I understand now that what flows in front of our house is gravity, and it's not under pressure. It's that one, it's that one section. However, that section did break one time. And we've been here now 17 or 18 years, and it was early on that there was a break there as well.
And that's why we're asking them to inspect it, so, yeah. Okay, yeah.
Anyways, okay, thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Huglitt. All right. Yep?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, thank you for your time. Staff, who have questions?
Can you just, I'm sorry?
Oh, I'm Elise Vogel, 3770 Enchanted Lane, Minatrista. Who is the project manager for the Tuxedo Enchanted Road project?
The project manager?
That's me.
WSB, Mr. Hornby.
So engineers?
Yes.
Okay, so the project manager needs to take responsibility for the timing, dependencies, and everything. That's what a project manager does. That's, that's my understanding and training. So I have a question. What happens if you don't get 50 degrees to lay the asphalt? What happens when you try to lay asphalt below 50 degrees?
Mayor, members of the council, you do not need 50 degrees with the bituminous down. You can put it down in colder weather, it's called cold-weather paving. You want to make sure the temperature of the pavement is consistent and comes off the pavement at 160 degrees. And you can pave it as long as the ground is not frozen. And that's been practiced for decades.
Okay.
And so that's why these projects that are bid late, you can generally count on working into November, if not mid-November to Thanksgiving. That's generally when the bituminous plant shuts down, just for that very, very reason. We don't want to put the finished bituminous lift on unless the temperature is 50 degrees rising.
Okay, so there's two layers.
If you don't get 50 degrees for that?
Well, that'll be next spring.
Until next year.
Okay.
Yeah, so the, the, there's two, two layers. There's what's called, it's called a base course. That goes down this fall, and then next, next spring, when it is 50 or more, then they put down what's called the wear course, so...
And that likely would happen after June 1st.
Okay.
Of 2018.
So in the meantime...
And probably better for the integrity of the road, so that if you do see, especially in the excavation areas, if there's some settlement.
Right.
That you correct those settlement issues before putting the pavement on, because you don't want to put a patch in the wear course.
Right, right.
Okay. With all due respect to you, Mr. Broney, I don't think this is Murphy's Law. In my opinion, this should have been started so late.
Sure.
And it should have, council should have demanded that the pipes had been inspected before you even started. So, that's my opinion. And I've had some input from other residents who couldn't be here. If you can do anything about the dust, and just help us out with that, that would be very appreciated.
Okay.
And I know your job isn't easy, so thank you for all your hard work, all of you. But yeah, there's a lot of people who are not happy with this, so...
Okay.
Thanks for doing your best, and thank you for taking ownership for your part. We appreciate it, thanks. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vogel. Gary, can you look into the dust issue, just to see what the issue...
It's a contractual issue.
Okay.
We wouldn't want the city doing, doing anything out there.
Okay, all right, so...
We can look at what they might be doing for dust control. One of the things that's on the positive side is that it's not 90 degrees in the middle of August doing this, because then you'd really have the dust.
Yeah, right. And I know, I do know, there's a lot of homes on Enchanted that are quite close to the road, and so even if there's some kind of dust abatement that you can, I don't know, do, at least for those homes, that would be great.
Typically, what they would end up doing is just using water to control dust. We wouldn't want to put any other chemical on it.
No, okay. All right, all right. With that, I think we all understand that difficult situation, and we're going to have to make the best of it. And we'll, I'm sure, be in touch. And thank you very much for coming and taking ownership of this. We appreciate it, so, thank you very much. Anything else?
Mayor, maybe if I can, to try to address some of these other project issues that were brought up by residents. City engineering staff contacted the Met Council before this project went into design.
Right.
Also contacted Met Council at the ti, prior to bidding, to check to see if this was in their capital plan and it was not. So this is emergency work. It is not planned, it's not planned on our part, certainly isn't planned on their part. And so it's just a matter of circumstance, we have to deal with it at this point.
Yeah.
And I think with Met Council's help and the, and the attention they brought to it, and the working with the city staff and myself, they've done a really nice job of coming up with alternatives to accomplish tasks for both projects.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, so, next, that concludes our special presentations. Normally, it doesn't take that long, but we'll move on to persons to be heard. Oh, Pat, okay, so we don't have anybody else signed up? But students, you don't have to leave. The fun is just starting.
They only need to be here an hour.
Oh, they only have to be here an hour. All right. So, really quick then, we're going to move on to consent agenda items. They consist of, A, approve our work session meeting minutes from October 2nd, 2017. B is approve our regular meeting minutes from October 2nd, 2017. C is approve our claims. D is approve a probation completion for Jesse Siskalski, who is our building official, that always is a tongue-twister. And then E is approve and award a street sweeping contract for 2018. And F is approve and award our lawn fertilization and weed control contract for 2018 through 2020. G is approve and award our lawn mowing and mowing-related services contract for 2018 through 2020. And H is a resolution to approve an extension of a Varian's approval for the Minatrista Baptist Church. Any ones that you need to remove?
I'd like to remove B.
B is regular meeting minutes, okay? Otherwise, we have A, C, D, E, F, G, and H. Is there a motion to approve those items?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Mr. Malater made the motion, and seconded by Ms. Mortensen. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. Mr. Malater?
On the meeting notes, the regular meeting notes, regarding Carrie Holstrom and Paul Berg, it's noted that, quote, commented that the 3515 Tuxedo Road parcel only has a garage on it. That's actually the 3465 parcel only has the garage on it.
Okay, yeah, and that, that's the one that was removed?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so, any other corrections? Otherwise, is there a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from October 2nd, 2017 with that change?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion is made by Mr. Malater, and seconded by Ms. Bruce. Further questions, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, all those opposed, motion passes 5-0. So our public hearings, we have none this evening, and so we'll move on to our business items. Our first business item is approve our First Amendment to the preliminary agreement for Woodland Cove 3rd Edition. Mr. Abel, or who is doing that? Dave, okay, Mr. Anderson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. City Attorney Beatty put together the staff report for this item, and essentially what we have going on here is a request from the developer of the Woodland Cove 3rd Edition, which is the next phase of the Woodland Cove development area, to do some additional work since, at this point, the weather looks to be cooperating, and extend sanitary sewer lines from the eastern boundary onto the 3rd Edition, or up the 3rd Edition to Lotus Drive. And from a, from the city's standpoint, there's really no issue with allowing that. It's an okay thing, it doesn't affect the city. There is a letter of credit that the city holds, and just shy of $1.5 million that will allow the city to protect itself if this work doesn't get done. And so I think Mr. Beatty summarized that nicely in his council report. And so I think the decision comes down to, to the council to decide if you want to allow this. And again, there are really no issues in allowing this. And again, uh, there are really no issues, um, in allowing this. I think it's okay.
Just quick, just, um, I need to visualize this. You said from the eastern border to Lotus, but Lotus is also on the eastern side. So the eastern border where?
Of Woodland Cove Third Edition, the eastern portion of that phase.
Okay, now I gotcha. Okay. Kinda in the middle of that big field, if you will.
Well, this, the third phase is by the water tower.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So, yeah, okay. All right. It, it just was confusing because it's going west. The water line is gonna be going east.
East. The east, the line is going east.
Is going east.
Starting on the east side and heading toward.
Heading east, yeah. Okay. All right. All right. Questions? Is there any chance that they might have to move this line?
No, um, Madam Mayor and council, actually, they spent a lot of time. The, where, where they're proposing to put it is actually going to be future open space. There's a proposed regional trail in the area. Um, this is not going through any of the future phases of the development.
Okay.
So it could, um, and likely will stay in this location.
Okay. Questions then? Any other questions? Okay, so, um, if you're in agreement, then I need a motion to approve the First Amendment to the preliminary agreement for Woodland Cove Third Edition.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Are there any questions, discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes five oh. Um, next, we have, um, purchase of a SolarBee mixing aerators for the water towers. Mr. Peters, I believe?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you, council. Um, the Department of Health had come through and done a sanitary report on, uh, everything, our, all our wells, our towers, um, plants, treatment plants. One thing they observed in one of the towers is we had a spare Casco tank mixer sitting there. And when asked what that was for, we told, we told them that we use that in the winter for moving water to keep the towers from icing up. Um, it was, uh, their concern, Mr. Knowles concerned, that this was non-compliant mixer. Upon doing some investigation, we found out that it is non-compliant, um, due to the fact that it is oil-cooled. And if they leak into a tank with water and oil don't mix, and your system becomes contaminated, which would mean a complete shutdown of the tower, rinse, clean, sanitize. Um, upon checking some of, now, these are the same units that we've used for years. Everybody's used them. They're just no longer being acceptable. These are the same things that people use at docks. It's the same exact thing that you use at a dock, basically to keep your water moving for the winter.
For the winter.
For the winter, exactly. So with that said, we started doing some investigation. We did have our towers inspected by Badger State Inspections. They've done, um, stuff for us before, through the past with, um, all our antenna stuff through David Abel, doing their inspections when anything's upgraded, um, on the towers, they do our inspections. Kinda asking them what's available out there. Uh, also asked Greg Johnson, who was the water consultant at WSB, what his thoughts were, um, on what units are available. And these were the runs that were recommended. Um, there are other systems out there. There's air systems that can be put in where air is actually pumped up and through the systems, but those are, um, twice as much as these systems. This is an electric pump system that is installed, uh, put in, run continuously. Now, this would not be just run for the winter. These would be run year-round to help mix the tank, to keep the, you know,
Sedimentation.
The sedimentation out, but keep you from getting quote-unquote old water
Okay.
in the tank. It would keep things moving, um, help the system in a whole, as a whole. Um, I was quite taken back by the cost of these things, but looking at the other options that are out there, um, they're all unbelievable. So, I mean, this is the, the one I think would be the best for doing it. And I'll answer any questions you have. I, I did some research on them. They're, a lot of people are using them. It's probably the best unit that's on the market right now for this. There's a five-year unconditional warranty on the unit itself, guaranteed to function for the five years. So beyond that, people have had them in for, you know, going on seven, eight, nine, ten years without any problems. So we're hoping to get that life out of them.
They're each fifteen-five?
Correct.
Okay.
There is a SCADA add-on for five hundred dollars or more where we can add it to our SCADA system, but I negated to put that in because all that's gonna tell you is it's on.
Oh.
So basically, we can, we do rounds every day. We can stop at the tower. We can look at the light. The light's on. We know it's stirring. We hope it is. It's not gonna tell you if it stops running. We will know when it stops running for sure.
Won't have to climb up.
Correct. Um, some of the cost savings that we have is there's electric up there already because of the Cascos. There's already electricity up there, so we do not have to add that. The only more expensive cost is the installation of it. They will have to drill through the tower to put a new anchor mount in. Um, but these are the guys that do all our inspections. They have done the inspection before. They know what they're doing. They've done a lot of them in the past, so I'm pretty confident they'll do a great job for us.
All right. Counsel has questions?
What's the expected maintenance on these, anything?
There's nothing. There's no maintenance on these whatsoever.
So when this pump, this tube thing that we're looking at, it dies, the motor, you know, is it the whole?
They are, well, there's two trains of thought. You can either replace, just, it depends on what goes wrong with it. You know, they can replace the motor unit in it, or at that point, you replace the whole unit. Now, at that point, since the electrics are installed, everything's already installed, the bracing's already in, it, you know, it, it won't run. It'll, it'll be a lot less than that, yes. The expensive part is getting everything there, up there, installed. That's, the install is the harder part. That's something we don't wanna even attempt.
Right, of course not, yeah.
How often do we have to clean the water towers?
We just did it.
We just had it done. Um, we just did a cleaning inspection on that in, you know, five to seven years. You know, it's a good time for that. Um, we have got the inspection report done. Uh, we've got it back from Badger State for what needs to be done to it, and I think that'll be coming back at a later date. Paul, am I correct in saying that?
Yeah.
As to what is needed and when?
Right. There's a, we'll be working on that with the Water CIP.
So how much out of curiosity does it cost to clean, um, the water tower? I mean, will this make up for some of the cost of cleaning?
I don't recall what that bid was, to be honest.
I don't recall either. Do you remember, Brian, what that came in at?
Like eight thousand or?
To do the cleaning inspection this year, do you remember what that was?
Not right offhand, I guess.
I don't remember either.
Eight thousand, uh, eight, twelve?
Yeah.
For both?
I, I don't recall what that was. It was, um, I was gonna say it was like ten grand for the.
Yeah.
But I, I don't recall the exact.
Yeah, I don't recall either. And this will help somewhat, but you're still gonna have to always clean the tower. I mean, you're gonna have.
Right. Now, we had a huge amount of sediment in, especially the, the Kings Point Water Tower, and that's one of the reasons we cleaned it. But we're hoping we won't have that much sediment going forward.
It was two thousand twelve or thirteen, we did the, the original cleaning, and then we ended up with seven feet of sediment in the tower, which was, um, more of a, I don't know.
A well issue.
Yeah, it was a well issue. Now, the reason that we wanted to clean and we get everything going was to start the whole process with the water treatment plant, start with a clean tower, do our online, inline flushing, get that stuff going. So now, going forward, it shouldn't be as bad.
But isn't the point that we gotta circle back to, we're not, what we have right now isn't compliant, right?
Correct. And there's nothing in there right now.
And we have to have these.
Well, we had to have them pulled
Yeah.
since they were doing it, um, you know, and they weren't working. So we were, we literally had to actually replace them with the same unit. And when we got the inspection report back, we were told we can't. And then, you know, so we had to look for something different. Um, we can choose not to do anything, but your tower's gonna freeze up.
No, that's not a good idea.
You don't want the tower, you don't want the tower to freeze. We have to do something, so. Well, you'd answer your question, Pam, with a clean both towers and inspect both of them was fourteen thousand four hundred dollars.
All right.
And that was a full, full down inspection and cleaning.
This might cut back on some of the cleaning costs then, maybe?
It will help. I mean, but they're still gonna have to be cleaned. You know, I mean, there's just no way around it. I mean, it's a sanitization type thing, so.
Well, the time period is likely gonna be longer between those.
Yeah, you want it to do as
Yeah.
frequently.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it looks like based on the diagram, is it, is it suspended from the top of the tank or does it actually mount to the bottom?
It is suspended from the top. It has waited to hold.
Okay, so it's not gonna get buried in sediment over time?
Nope. We don't want anymore, we don't want that much sediment in the tower anymore.
It won't actually be in the water?
Yes, it's actually is suspended in the water.
Oh, it is, okay.
It moves the water. It basically, it's kinda like a blender. It kinda swirls it from top to bottom and keeps the water moving throughout the entire system, so, or throughout the entire tank.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Any other questions? Otherwise, um, it's something we need. We have to bring it up to compliance. Um, we don't want our water towers to freeze, so. But good information and good questions. So. I'm looking for a motion to adopt, um, this resolution approving the purchase and installation of these two SolarBee GS nine mixing units from Badger State Inspections for a total of thirty-one thousand for Public Works Department.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Ms. Bruce made the motion and Ms. Thole seconded that. Further questions, discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes five oh. So next, we move on to, um, a promotion for Cassandra Tabor. Mr. Brony?
Uh, yes, uh, thank you, Mayor and Council. And I'm going to, if Mayor, if you could pass these around as well for each of the elected officials here tonight. I apologize for that not being in the packet. It should've been. It'll be recorded in the minutes as well. And what you have there is the assessment, which is generally called a job evaluation rating for Mr. Jamak about, uh, the position that we're talking about tonight. And then the actual job description for the Director of Administration. Again, I apologize for that. I thought it was in the packet, but I looked this afternoon and I realized it wasn't. So, there you go. Um, just wanted to touch a little bit on this. Um, as you know, Cassandra has been here since early August of twenty fifteen, so two-plus years. Um, and she's done an outstanding job. Um, and I'm bringing this forward tonight, and I've had the approval of the Personnel Committee, um, for this item, um, based on her education level, her experience level, and then, of course, the job that she's been performing here for the last two-plus years. Um, I think she's ready to move up into that, uh, Department Director level responsibility. In fact, she's probably been doing quite a bit of Department Director level responsibility for a fair amount of time since she's, uh, since starting here. So, um, I'm recommending that, uh, the City Council approves this promotion for Cassandra to move her to a grade level of sixteen. Um, uh, from her, I think her current pay grade is a thirteen, so to sixteen and to a annual rate of seventy-nine thousand forty dollars annually. Um, I will certainly, uh, ask and answer, or answer any questions that you might have. Um, I think, um, in addition to Gary Peters, who's not a, quote, Department Director, but he leads the Public Works, uh, area. I have, uh, like I said, in addition to Gary, I have four people that I rely on at the, uh, executive level. Uh, that being the three young ones you see here to my right and Cassandra. Um, and there's other people that are part of our management team, but those are the folks that I rely on. Those are the ones I meet with the most. Those are the ones that, uh, help steer the city, uh, to the solutions that we try to bring forward to council. And I, and I, like I said, I, I, I think she's ready for this advanced, uh, position within our city. And like I said, I'll stand for any questions.
Okay. Questions? Silence.
What, I'm, I'm just curious, what, what was the primary purpose for looking at the promotion? Was it just that you have too much to do and you're looking for someone to take over some of the responsibilities that, that you're doing? Or what, what's?
Uh, uh, Mayor, Council, no, it's really has nothing to do with offloading any of my work towards Cassandra. Um, I feel as if, like I said earlier, um, she's, um, uh, done a great job of kinda taking the original job that she was hired to do and kinda taking it up to that next level. Um, I've asked her to do some additional things, uh, for that position, but she's also taken on some, uh, initiatives on her own. And I just believe that it's worthy for, um, the city to be able to reward her essentially with a job well done that kinda keeps the, um, management, upper management that I have here intact. Just for kind of a historical thing, when, when I was hired here as the assistant, I was essentially at, at that department level, being, being second in charge. And when I proposed this position back the day before she was hired, I, I was, I kinda did away with that kinda second in command because, like I said, I've got other people here to my right that are fully capable of, um, stepping in for me, you know, whether I'm gone for a short while or gone forever. But, you know, hit by a beer truck is what I like to say sometimes. But, you know, 'cause they all have very good leadership qualities. They've all done a great job of leading their own departments. Um, I didn't need a second in command to layer in between the city administrator position and their department office. Um, I have faith and trust in all of them, including Cassandra. So, um, I just felt like with that kinda as the, um, uh, format for our, our organization, I thought this would be the best time to, to do something like that.
But she is taking on extra responsibilities.
She has.
And, and currently is, is taking on extra responsibilities. Um, and she'll be managing staff as well. So there's diff, there's more responsibilities.
She's, uh, took on the, uh, and she offloaded me, I would say, to answer your question, she did offload me on the, um, supervision of two employ, two employees. When Joni left, uh, we, we changed the job position and had Aneisha come on board. She started managing, um, Aneisha from that point because there was some communication pieces in that position that would seem like a natural fit to have Cassandra manage her instead of myself managing her. I managed Joni when I was the assistant and also as the administrator. Uh, the same holds true for Chris Lindquist, is the city clerk. When I was the assistant, I supervised Chris, and then when I became manager, I also supervised Chris, which wasn't the, the case with my predecessors. So it kinda realigns us with what we were doing before, where I have fewer direct reports than I had before. Not a lot, but fewer. And it, it worked well back then, and I think it'll work well again, so.
And when we were.
Oh, I'm sorry. That wasn't laid out anywhere in the packet. So the two direct reports are gonna be Chris as well as Aneisha?
Chris and Aneisha are the direct reports that would be for Cassandra, correct?
Okay.
Yep. So that was one reason why we were able to, um, create this different position and promote her to it, because she does do some supervisory.
That's, that's kinda odd that that was the reason, and I don't see it anymore, but nonetheless.
It was part of the reason, yeah.
It wasn't, it wasn't articulated in the packet, so.
Yeah.
Um, that, that helps understand it a little more.
Sure.
When we were interviewing, well, uh, looking for candidates and interviewing candidates for this role for the city, uh, one of the things that we were really looking for was someone who could, uh, improve the, the website. It needs a lot of help. And, um, we had a website, but it wasn't interactive and, and that sort of thing. And it's been Cassandra that's pretty much led that charge and with her skills, um, was able to get that up and running and in place to where it is now, that we now have a tool where we can post information for our residents in situations such as this sewer may break and give them timely information and for them to be able to email in and have their questions responded to in an informed and timely manner. And that is also one of the roles that Cassandra has played.
So what we, the other thing, um, prior to, um, the two of you coming on board, the other thing, um, and also with Cassandra's position, we try and offer, um, move-up opportunities so that we can retain our good employees. That's, that's the other thing. Uh, and when we, we hired Cassandra, um, Ms. Tabor, I should refer to her as, I'm sorry, um, when we hired Ms. Tabor, we also had at that time, and it was vacated, um, an assistant administrator position, as Mr. Brony pointed out. And we said, well, right now, we don't need that, but, and, and actually, what he was making three or four years ago, whenever that was, um, he was making more than what Cassandra is being offered here. So we, we said, well, we don't need that position at this time, and we could eliminate that, if you will, yet still keep it in our back pocket as an option to, to provide, um, upward, um, move-up opportunity. So this isn't still, it's not in its, uh, assistant administrator position. That's not what it. it is, but it's still another notch up from what she was hired at, and still below the Assistant Administrator position.
So what level is she currently at? This is going to level sixteen, and she's currently at what?
I believe a level thirteen, if I remember correctly.
Is it fourteen?
I don't think it's a fourteen, I believe it's a thirteen. That's, I just don't have it off the top of my head.
See, there's the thirteen or fourteen.
So she's going up three levels?
Correct.
Thirteen.
And generally, that's, you know, the Department Director level is generally the top ten or twenty percent of your pay grades, and we have twenty, so sixteen is twenty percent, I guess, so. And I did note in the Staff Report, Councilmember Maliter, that she, in the last paragraph just above the Recommended City Council Action, that she did take on two additional direct reports, so.
Oh, and says here under, well, this, you didn't have this in your packet, on page...
Not the JavaScript one, I'm talking about the second page of the agenda item, just above the Recommended City Council Actions. Ms. Tabor has been successful in her current role, taking additional project duties, including the addition of two direct reports, so.
I just didn't know which two.
Oh, okay.
So if the reason is to reward Ms. Tabor for her performance, isn't that what the levels are designed to do? You go from one level to another, and you get promoted from one level to another? Why are we skipping three?
Uh, not necessarily. I believe when we promoted Nick Olson, that wasn't just a one-level increase. I know when we, hopefully someday in the future, when we hire our new CSO position, that will not be a one-level increase, to take a CSO and move them from that position to a police officer, be quite a bit higher, so, I don't know exactly how many levels will be, but I know it'll be higher, so. With twenty levels, I mean, there's a lot that goes into grading a position, and based on the years of experience and the responsibility level that this particular job has, it got graded at a grade level sixteen, so.
That's, was that in our packet or was that in the handout? That's in the handout, if you, so, George Truma rated it, so it's based on the qualifications and it's based on the job description and duties and experience, and so based on all of that, it's, there's, the job is rated at four hundred and fifty-five points, which guides it to the grade sixteen. It's not that we're just picking a number here or there, and it's because of the job description, the number of years of experience, and all of those factors wrapped into one, that's why he's recommending a grade sixteen.
And I understand he's recommending this, I guess I'm a little uncomfortable with the big jump that it's taking, I mean, I wanna make sure that we're rewarding employees for good performance and we're keeping people here that have the skills that we wanna keep. It seems like a big jump for the first promotion, that somebody's getting to jump three levels.
Well...
I understand.
And that's my opinion, others might have different.
I would agree with that.
I would say that not everyone would be worthy of a three-grade jump. Not many would, but I believe that Ms. Tabor is. She came to us with a degree of sophistication and knowledge that we were very fortunate that she was interested in coming to work here. And by coming here, she brought her skill set and the knowledge that she had, and then has since come into city work and has, came up to speed very quickly, didn't just sit and wait for direction, but brought, and didn't just take the bull by the horns with ideas that she was given, but also brought in ideas herself, and has served a very viable role in vitalizing the city of Minnetrista and our workspace, and has just made a lot of contributions, so.
And I don't question that she has done those things, I just, I just have a concern that it's too much, too fast, and...
Well, I wouldn't look at, in terms of the increase, I would look at the job description and what it should be paying, that's, I think, the most important thing. I think we got a fantastic deal when we hired her, and if we were to have to replace her, that's the other thing I always look at, what would we be paying another individual with this job description and these responsibilities? What would we be paying them? And this says, with that type of skill set and that experience and background, this is what we would pay them. So we have a choice, we can not do this and then take the risk that something else might be available to Ms. Tabor, and then we would have to hire somebody at this level anyway. So those are...
And I'm not suggesting that we don't do anything, I'm suggesting we might wanna consider something else.
Well, Mayor Council, the position that I'm offering to you to vote on tonight is for a Director of Administration at that grade level, so, if I offered something else, it would be a different job altogether, and that's not what I need. I need a Director of Administration in order to keep the city running the way I feel like it needs to run, so. I brought this headcount to the Council a number of years ago at the HR Communications level, 'cause that's what I needed at the time, but now I believe I need more than that, and she is able to fill those duties quite admirably. And as the Mayor just said, if I had my druthers, if she did leave tomorrow, I would be asking for this position to be, the one I wanna staff back.
I just wanted to weigh in on this as well. My daughter has a very similar position, and just recently went through a job change, and with Cassandra's experience and her education, this is, what she is gonna be making, is right in line with what the private sector is offering a position like this. So, and with the additional people that she will be having report to her, I think the promotion like this is timely. I think if you don't promote people like Cassandra, I've seen her work in action, and she just gets up and goes, she's great in leadership, she's a taskmaster, and if we don't keep her challenged, or people like this, they will look for challenges outside, and she would be scarfed up instantly. So my opinion is, I think this job is definitely warranted.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
One additional comment. I think it's unanimous, we agree that Ms. Tabor's done a nice little job. I'm a little bit concerned about trying to make the job fit the person, and that's kinda what we're doing here, is we've got somebody that we wanna keep, and therefore we're trying to make this job fit. As an organization, as an employer, I think we need to look at this as, what do we need? And it doesn't always mean, you know, yes, we wanna try to keep people to the extent we can, but sometimes we can't, because as a person grows professionally, they may desire challenges that we simply can't provide as a city of seven thousand people. And that may be the case here, and so I'm a little bit concerned about creating a role just for the person, whereas, my question is, does the city, the city of Minnetrista, with approximately seven thousand people, need a Director of Administration role? And that's kinda where I have some issues with this, it's nothing to do with Ms. Tabor, I think she does a great job, but...
Well, that's a question that I think Mr. Barone answered, but that would be a question...
I appreciate the answer, I just, that's my concern.
My background, especially when I worked at Eden Prairie, I had three or four times they created a position for me, job title and all, so, it's not like it's not done, it's been done a lot, my experience, so, you wanna maximize the number of good quality employees you have, and if sometimes you end up, I don't think it is the case with this, but sometimes if you end up creating a position to keep somebody, I think it's all for, we've done it a couple of other times here, we had a couple promotions in our finance area, and that was in part due to somebody leaving, but we also created a couple of job opportunities for both Dawn and Angie, working towards their expertise and their skill set to create job titles and duties that I don't think you'd find at a lot of different places, and even though we're small, I still think we have those kind of needs here, where you try to, if you find somebody really good, you're gonna keep them.
I think to Mr. Maliter's point, maybe answering your question, I'm hearing Mr. Barone say, yes, if, yes, we need this position, so, we're not just creating it just to promote Ms. Tabor, but we also need this position, and so then the, I think that's what I'm, and he's saying, if Ms. Tabor wouldn't be here, or if she were to go elsewhere, this is the position that we would want filled. So maybe that answers your question a little bit.
Oh, I understand what answers, I just disagree with them.
Okay.
I disagree with them.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying. I get it, I just disagree with them.
Okay. Alright.
Alright. I think I just thought of one other point. I believe another piece of Ms. Tabor's responsibilities is the health plan, correct?
Well, she's part of the HR.
To some degree of that, and now with the new, well, it's not new anymore, but the new, it's tied somehow to the Affordable Care Act, isn't it? Or it was one rollout of that. Anyway, we need to go out for bed every year on the medical plan, where it used to be, I think it was maybe every three years.
Five years.
Five?
It was every five years.
Okay, and so, you know, that is something that I think Ms. Tabor has taken some of that off of the plate of Mr. Barone, and so...
So, Council, where do you wanna go? Do we wanna approve this, do we wanna...
I will, there's the wording for motion, is there?
The recommended action is, Personnel Committee is recommending approval of a promotion for Cassandra Tabor to the Director of Administration effect of October seventeenth.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Further questions? Comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Okay, so we have two opposed, and that would be Ms. Bruce and Mr. Maliter, and three ayes. Okay, so, next we have administrative reports. Mr. Barone's staff reports?
Um, yes. Just wanted to say that at our next council meeting, we'll have Mr. Peter Leatherman here, will be reviewing the community survey, I will be sending that out in the next packet, and then we also have a three-week break between this meeting and the next meeting, just the way the calendar flows, there's five Mondays in October, and so we, we'll have a three-week break between this and our November sixth council meeting, I believe, so.
Yep.
I think that's all we have.
Okay.
Did you, I think we got, Ms. Tabor is gonna talk a little bit about one item.
So I just wanted to give an update on Students on Commission, so if you remember, this fall, we brought to you the concept of introducing students on commission, so that we have students in our area schools participating on our commissions. I worked with all of our public and our private schools in the area, trying to solicit students to participate. As many of you are well aware, these students are extremely schedule tight, for lack of a better word, so regardless of multiple visits and interactions with current council or the councils, we weren't able to get any students interested in participating on it in the format that we proposed it. So, Chief Falls and I have been chatting, and we're looking at reforming adding the Citizens Academy as well, and he and I are planning to work together to see if there's some sort of conjunction that we can bring together, where we can get our Citizens Academy as something that is more responsive from the community, as well as the Students on Commissions concept. So, just to give you an update, so you didn't wonder where that had gone, and then hopefully we'll be bringing that back to you next year, this next year.
Okay. Alright. That, does that conclude all of our staff reports, Sim? So we have about a few more minutes left before the tape needs to be changed, and I'll get through it real quick. Attended the Personnel Committee meeting, the Gillespie Board meeting, and also Northwest League, and it was interesting, we had a gentleman from the Minnesota Builders Association and kinda talking to us about trends in the housing, and how, you know, of course, villas, as we know, are pretty strong right now, but also coming back are townhomes. They kinda went away for a while, and primarily, he was saying, is because there was such a glutten of townhomes back in '08 through '12 or whatever, and so, that big, a lot of inventory has now been sold and taken up, so now developers are actually looking at townhomes again. Single family is still strong, but he was talking about smaller lots, people are more inclined for smaller lots, so. And then I will be attending the Minnehaw Creek Watershed District's award ceremony on November second, and then we'll be back here on the sixth again. That's it.
I attended the Personnel Committee meeting and am planning on attending the Planning Commission meeting on October twenty-third, we're good, we've got material?
Yes.
Okay.
I attended the WCC meeting on the twelfth, and it was hosted at the Back Channel Brewery, and we got a tour, it was very interesting. They opened mid-September, and the grand opening is November twenty-fifth. They brew all their own beers, let's see, and there is no food going to be served in this place, however, they are going to be working with local restaurants and vendors to do food trucks outside in Parkland, so very cool, so they're working on that. Scotty Bees is doing a fundraising event, benefit weekend, and all the, twenty-five percent of proceeds will be going back to we can, and that is on October twenty-third. And the thirty-ninth Annual Christmas Tree Lighting is going to be on November eighteenth, and there will be no Moonlight Trail this year, 'cause they are trying to consolidate events, but make them bigger and stronger.
Alright.
Oh, and on Back Channel, they'll later bring your dog inside, so.
Ooh, yes, they do.
Went to the LMCD meeting, starting to look at budget for next year, well, we're not, we've approved budget for next year, but looking at a little bit more detail as to what we're, just more budget review. Also looking at our, quite a, the invasive species review of harvesting, it was an exceptionally busy year for harvesting due to the weed growth, and looking at, trying to expand efforts and, or do better coordination with private companies for additional removal. And we're also going through what's called a re-codification effort, where we are rewriting code to make it more user-friendly, so, that's an ongoing effort, but we're just starting to wrap it up at the end of the year, so.
That's a pretty big effort, the re-codification.
It's been going on the whole year, and it's probably half-done.
Okay.
I went to the Parks Commission meeting, and they approved the 2018 CIP of, I think it was a hundred and twenty-five...
Recommended approval.
Or they recommended, they recommended that it go to the City Council, but they approved their role in recommending the CIP. I think it was like a hundred and twenty-five dollars, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the park, and I can't remember the name of it, just was...
Trillion.
Lainer, Gene Lainer.
Right, yep, so, that was all.
Alright, so with that, we can be adjourned if I have a motion.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Ms. Bruce made the motion and Ms. Mortensen seconded, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes 5-0.